We always proceed each council meeting with a prayer and the pleasure of allegiance. If you'd like to, please feel free to join us.
If you'll bow with me. Our gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the city that you've graciously blessed us to be stewards of. And lord, we just ask that everything that we do be pleasing in your sight. And we ask lord for your continued wisdom and your grace. In your name we pray. Amen.
For those of you in the audience tonight, and those of you watching at home, we're having some technical difficulties with our audio. So you may hear the roar, and I'm not even sure if you can hear us if you're watching at home. That being said, we'll now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, please call the roll.
Mr. Hawkins? Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of the June 27th council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes? I don't take a motion to approve the minutes that submitted. No, we've done that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Okay. First up, we have a report of our standing committee, starting with the community development. Mr. Hawkins, turn this portion over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is a resolution supporting federal and state legislation to ensure proper assessment and collection of sales taxes from all internet and online sales. And this resolution, Mr. Garrett, is R. seventeen...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
And what this is, and I think I'm explaining this right, Chuck, you can correct me, that I'll use Amazon as an example. I went on Amazon the other day to buy something. And although I went through the Amazon site, they sent me to the manufacturer's site. And the manufacturer does not pay sales tax to the state of Arkansas, so you have to buy from, directly from Amazon. So what we're asking to do here is for this resolution to show our support that all business that's transacted via the internet these days will see some sales tax turn back from it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero.
That's a seven to zero.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rename a portion of Highway twenty-five from the old Marlton Highway to the intersection with Friendship Road. And this ordinance is O. seventeen...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Make a motion that we waive three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. Any discussion? Okay. We need to come to a conclusion to this on tonight, on this tonight.
I don't vote on waiving the readings.
I thought we did that. All right.
I made a motion and a second.
All right, this has been weighing heavy on me, so. We have a motion and a second to waive the readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we rename it Bell Valley Drive. And my reasoning for this is, I thought about not naming it after a family or a person, but every street in Conway just about is named after a family or a person. And everyone out there that lives on that area is worthy of having it named after them. But that's, 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 that's my two cents worth.
That's probably the reason, and I said this in our meeting when we discussed this last, that I hated to, to name it after a family or an individual, just for the simple fact that there are so many worthy families that live in that area, that I felt like were deserving to be named after them as well. So that's just my thought.
It really makes me no difference. I will just point out, though, that, you know, we're not the only city that does this, but we've have situations where a continuous street just kind of breaks at one street and you get a new name. And it can be confusing to people traveling. I don't think about it here. You know, almost every street that crosses Dayboard Drive has a different name on the north side than the south side. It's me, I know what they are. But, you know, I've been in other cities and seen that, and it gets confusing. Where am I? Which way's supposed to go? It can be confusing, people not knowing where they're going, having streets change when it crosses a street. That said, Salem now pretty much runs from Nutters Chapel Golf Course to Pass Beaver Fort. It runs forever. So if you're talking about somewhere on Salem, like, where on Salem? You know, it's gonna be too long, maybe, in some instances. But, that said, it makes me no difference, Bell Valley Drive is probably just as good as anything. If we can't extend friendship, which would make logical sense, but if they're telling me the post office does not like the extension of friendship, then Bell Valley may be the way to go.
Brian?
I just want to point out, I'm not sure, I checked with Jason all about the, give your microphone, the post office thing. Theo might want to, I don't know if you know anything or not. I don't know, I'm just pointing out. But I don't know where that came from. There's no issue as far as I know with the post office. I mean, we set the addresses and they follow them. So just want to point that out, that there really is no issue, as far as I know and aware of, that the post office has said that they have an issue with it.
I know from the past, there's a main street that runs in front of the post office. It also runs almost to Felonia. It picks up out there. So we don't, we don't have a problem. They didn't have a problem with that when I was there. So I can't speak to that, because it's been a year or two since I've been there.
Right. And the other thing, I guess I would point out, the email I sent you earlier, I just had some questions earlier. So I kind of put that together, just so you'd know how many addresses were in play and all that kind of thing. The way it probably should happen, doesn't have to happen that way, but the new, at least the new segment of Highway twenty-five should, you're gonna have to change the name anyway. It's gonna become something else. It would make a lot of sense, at least on that segment of road, to make it a four-digit number, because it goes up to about, a little bit further north of South Shore and changes to county numbers, which is fine, because it actually switches to county there. But it seemed to me a logical breakpoint to take where it comes from I-40, Old Marlton Highway, all the way up to the New Salem Road. Whatever that segment of road is, whatever, change that to four-digit with the new name, because it's gonna be changed anyway. So in that, you're only talking, forgot how many, about a dozen or so addresses there, that basically, and they're gonna have to change their name anyway, so they could get a four-digit number. And it would make more sense, I think, from the post office standpoint, everybody else trying to find an address out there. So that's the only other thing I point out.
That would be big for emergency services, too.
Right. I mean, because you're going from a four-digit and all of a sudden jump to seven, and you're still on the same road, it's just like one house over. It doesn't make a lot of sense at that point. You get up around Friendship and it breaks across the road to Salem, it can stay a two-digit. I mean, that still makes, it'd be ideal to be four-digit probably all the way, depending on what the name was. But at that point, it's probably more logical to switch to another numbering system. That's all.
Makes sense. So we've, we've already voted to make that Salem Road all the way up to Beaver Fort. So that part's done, right? So we're just talking about that one section there.
Right. I guess it will be North Salem, is that correct?
Probably. I guess, since we have a South Salem, I guess it would have to be.
I think it needs to be North Salem, because it's on the north part of town to distinguish between.
Just be Salem. The South Star is the Dayboard Drive. So, no, just be Salem, I think.
Well, I mean, I was just thinking, if somebody's like, what part of Salem? Well, you know, North Salem, they would know it's on the north part of the city. Seems to make sense, but that's just a thought.
My preference was Friendship, if it can work.
Yeah.
And work okay for everybody. That was really my preference, because I think that's a nod to what's out there, what's been out there. You know, Friendship Road and the community out there's been out there for a long time. And then we, we don't offend any family that's out there. Because there are, you're right, Mary, there's a lot of great families out there who've contributed a lot.
And we've gotten phone calls from, I know of five, that I've gotten phone calls from.
Well, and we've called Bill Bell Lane, too, already in the city.
Brian, do we know if Friendship Road is three-digit or four-digit numbers?
It's two-digit, starting at the new, I'll get here.
That's where the county kicks in.
It's two-digit, starting, well, presently where it starts. So what would happen, like if the, if you want to change the four-digit on the new, or the old segment of road, Highway twenty-five, it'd become four-digit all the way up to the New Salem Road. There's one house that is on Friendship right now, that actually has a two-digit number, that probably should go to a four-digit, because it would make sense for that new portion of road. But other than that, all the rest can stay the same, and they're two-digit numbers. And they start around seven or so and go up to three hundred or so. So it makes sense, to me, to start from that point forward with the county road number.
Any further questions? We have a motion to rename it.
Never had a second on the motion.
No, so I was saying, do we have a second? Okay, then let's continue debating till we come up with a name.
I make a motion that we go with Friendship Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to name, to continue the name Friendship Road?
Is there anybody who lives out there here tonight? I was just gonna check. Okay. Oh, there's somebody.
I may be the only one here that, I do live on that segment, and I know there's been a lot of debate going around. Do I need to step up?
Yeah, so people at home can hear.
I gotta be on TV?
Now everybody can see me and hear me. I'm Matt Bell, thirty-one, twenty-five, Highway twenty-five North. I'm right, basically, in the middle of the segment that's, that's being renamed. Personally, I've submitted about fifteen names to you as council members over the course of, there you go, over the course of the past several months. And I've, I've remained adamant about public input and getting the ability of everybody to contribute to this. And I think that's, that's what we're doing here. And I think that's, that's a great effort on your part, to try to figure out exactly what to do here. So do you have any specific questions for me?
I'd like to compliment the Bell family on twenty-two nominations of Bell Valley Drive.
Well, you know, I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised, I have to say that. Personally, I've never really supported having Bell in the name. And I think it should be a name that's representative of the community as a whole, and not just a particular family or group of people. So, that being said, I think Friendship Road could work well. Another alternative is New Friendship Road. If the post office, or anybody in general, really had a problem with Friendship Road, if that name wouldn't work, add New to it. You know, keep the, keep the other name the same, old friend, or new, the old part is Friendship Road, and this would be New Friendship Road. Might be a little bit late in the ballgame to bring that up, but however, you know, if that could be a possibility, that might work as well. So.
Did you also send us Tin Can Hill?
I think you came, you came up with that.
No, I didn't come up with that. Somebody gave it to me, but I did bring it up.
I remember, you said that more than once, and that is an interesting name. Tin Can Hill would, would be very unique, to say the least, to say the least. Anything else for me?
He said it's, he said it's all right.
Okay.
Then you said the post office didn't give you, have no complaint?
Well, when Felicia made contact with US Postal Service, they, because I think the record shows that the meeting we had before this, when it first started, that they did not want it named Friendship Road. And supposedly because of the split there, but I don't see any difference in the split in that and any other intersection.
Exactly.
They'll figure it out.
Yeah, we can move on with this, and they can tell us different.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I said, sure, oh. If you're gonna name it Friendship Road, name it Friendship Road, the new won't make any difference. If you're gonna put another word in it, you might as well change the whole name. So if you're gonna make it Friendship Road, just make it Friendship Road. If you know, look on with the new, put a whole new name on it.
I do know that the residents of the current Friendship Road were somewhat concerned, because they did not want their numbering to change.
Well, they want it.
Well, they're counting anyway.
It's gonna have to be anyway.
Right, and so.
I think it'd just be one.
One, that's one.
And that's the only reason, because they've shifted to the other side of Salem.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance renaming a portion of Highway twenty-five to Friendship Road. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Hey, this will be ordinance O. seventeen seventy-six. Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Mr. Hawkins?
Excited, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve an annual patrol and condition assessment of all hard-surface local roadways for the Street and Engineering Department. I saw Mr. Finley Vincent in the back. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
This indeed.
The contract is directly behind the memo, and I request approval of this contract with Greenberg Pharoah to perform an annual video patrol and condition assessment of all of our hard-surface roadways in Conway within the city limits, excluding state highways. And we'll use this information to update and refine the annual pavement management system that we implemented last year, with the goal of maximizing the functional life of the roadways that we're tasked with maintaining. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Finley, I think we got great value from this, this past year, which was the very first year we did it. I think money well spent. But does enough change in one year's time to require this expense annually?
It can, and that's something that we can talk about moving forward. What I will say is that my initial plan, given the costs that we paid, we paid more than twice this last year to implement the pavement management system. And given the cost, my plan was to do one ward per year. But when I asked Asset Max what it would cost for them to, to do one more ward this year, it was similar to this cost. They, I think they lost money on us last year, quite frankly. And, and I started researching and tried to talk to, talk to a lot of more companies. And actually, the company that, that I'm proposing we hire is the same company that the Faulkner County used last year, correct? And as I understand, I've talked with Mr. Ledbetter about it. They've been very happy with the services they have provided. And, and so essentially, we're getting the entire city done for similar costs to what Asset Max would charge us to do just a quarter of the city. The reason for that is that when we hired Asset Max, they didn't just do a survey for us, they did engineering services for us as well, to provide a pavement management system. And I certainly appreciated that, because I'd never done it before. It's still kind of a rarity around here, especially for municipalities. And I certainly learned a whole lot. But since we've learned so much from that process, I don't want to hire, I don't want to pay them for engineering services every time we want to update the survey. I want to do it myself. And so that's why I want to contract with Greenberg Pharoah and pay them just to do the survey. Now, they're gonna collect the data in a different way than Asset Max would, in a way that works better for me, so that I can do my own assessment. And that's one reason why I want to do the entire city this year. Some municipalities and counties and state agencies still decide to do a full assessment every, every single year. They believe that it's worth it for what they spend, but the value they get back. And that's something that we can discuss, perhaps next year, if you'd like to. But I would ask you if you would consider doing the whole city this year, because, like I said, they're gonna collect the data in a different way. In addition, they're gonna give us data that we didn't even get from Asset Max. For, for example, they're gonna do a pothole map. So as they're driving the city, anywhere they see a pothole in the city limit, it will be GPS located. Similarly, for drainage problems that are within the roadway, they will, they'll give that, they're gonna give us, and they're gonna give us actually, this is not something that costs them extra, none of these things cost them extra, but it's a value to us. They're gonna do a video assessment as well. So they mounted a camera, GPS camera, on the front of the car. And as they drive, they're constantly recording that. Now, what that means is, if I see a section of roadway and I question the data that I got back from it, and I feel like it doesn't seem quite right, I don't have to drive across town. And we actually spent multiple days, almost even weeks, driving around town last year and verifying the data. And now, in a matter of moments, I can click on that road, and it'll pull up exactly where they were and show me the video, which just saves me time, which saves the city of Conway money.
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this, entering in this agreement. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one thing to say. It's a good, it's a good program, but in the future, I think we should spend some of that money on sidewalks and streets where people complaining about. I mean, I understand the technology of finding out if the street's banned, driving, finding about the potholes. But we have people calling every day complaining about potholes, and I think that money could go to some of the potholes. We got people saying, no sidewalks on our street. And this is a lot of money to be spending on that. But I've been voting for it tonight, but we need to get away from spending money on all this stuff and start fixing things. That's just my opinion.
And we are, Finley and I have been meeting frequently on our streets, and some of the things that we're wanting to do in the, in the near future, probably be able to start in twenty-eighteen. One thing we're gonna do is a citizen, if a citizen's driving down the street, and they hit a pothole, they'll be able to drop a pin, on our program, to let us know where there's a pothole in the street. Now, granted, we're gonna have a bunch of little pins dropping for a while, but we are, we are, our end game is just really get our streets in the shape, Theo. And soon as the money becomes available, we're gonna work on that hard. And some of our sidewalks, especially in our lower and moderate income areas, we're gonna use CVG money to, to start working on those. So we got a plan, we're just getting there. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Garrett? I'm sorry, any further discussion?
Can I just ask, and this is more, this, and I appreciate your phone call and kind of going.
Can I just ask, and this is more, and I appreciate your phone call and kind of going through my questions about this before. This is more a general question about contracts, because I know this is a one lump sum, and we've had some issues historically with some contracts, and I'm not saying we will with this one, but in the future, maybe, Jamie, this is something. Is there a way to hold back part of it to make sure we get what we contracted for? You know, we hold back ten percent of it? And that's more a contracting, that's not, you know, I think this is a good.
I'll let Jamie answer that question if she has anything to add, but I won't pay this bill until we're satisfied. I may pay some of it and portions. I would suspect that I might get bills, I might get two or three or even four bills from them as they complete some surveying and then give us all the deliverables, but I certainly won't pay the final bill until we're satisfied.
Thanks.
And there's certain terms working in the contract where we can kind of.
I just wanted to say it out loud.
Yeah.
We've had that before.
That's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, we've talked about different, specific invoicing and things like that, also the termination clause, and those provisions in there do protect us.
Protect us, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next up, we have our Public Service Committee. We have a resolution to authorize the mayor to obtain a matching grant from the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism's Outdoor Recreation Grant Program. Ms. Candy?
Tonight, we're back. This is the grant that we have, that's the LWCF grant for the Laurel Park Splash Pad. And this is one we had in May, and remember, we pulled it just to, we made sure we got our tennis bids in and everything. And now, we're back, and we've decided to go with Laurel Park. The application is due in August, August 25th. And we've got a, we've kind of, Steve and I did a budget. Our budget came out to $330,000, $132, so we'll be asking the state for $165,066. And that, we pretty much think we've got everything covered under that budget, and I've got it environmentally cleared, ready just to put it all together and submit it if you approve this resolution tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any further discussion?
How big's this splash pad?
It's gonna be 3,000 square feet, is that correct? 3,000 square feet. It's gonna be nice.
You'll probably hate I came tonight, but anyway.
No, sir, we'll get it.
I thought it was gonna be at the baseball complex. Are we having two of them?
And this, I think y'all had.
That's a different project.
Yeah, that's a different project.
This is for the grant for another one.
Okay, so we are gonna get the one, okay.
Yeah, and remember, this was LWCF, that's where it's already been federalized. So, we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna do some stuff at Fifth Avenue, that's next. So, that's why we had to use these parks, because they're already federalized. The one out, the station park, you don't have the federal money out there, so you can do other stuff.
Parks manager about getting that fixed.
Yes, sir, that'll be.
Make them all federal.
But this one is specific for this program, and we're able to get you 50% back.
Great. Thanks, Candy.
Excellent.
Any further discussion? I can hardly wait, I'm taking my grandkids out there. Mr. Garrett?
This will be Resolution R1727. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven, zero. Thank you, Candy. Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds and accepting bids, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with CoreCo Construction for a tennis facility. I assume we have a lot of tennis people here tonight. Mr. Edison, you're the hero of the town.
What about that? Yeah. We accepted bids on the 27th, I believe it was, of June, and we had seven bidders, which we were really happy about. Five of those bids came in within 175,000 of each other, so we feel the numbers are really tight on the bid process. We're asking the council to approve CoreCo's bid and to appropriate $2.5 million for the tennis facility. Rick is here, if you have any questions, you've got some posters down below, you can try to get an idea what the facility will look like.
The drawings are beautiful.
But we were really pleased with the bids, they were really, really close, so.
Have y'all had a chance to look at them? Okay.
I make a motion to waive the readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven, zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance naming CoreCo Construction as a general contractor for the construction of a tennis facility at Laurel Park at a cost of 2.5 million. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the fact that this was a collaborative effort between our Parks Department and the tennis community to work together to make this the type of structure that is needed for the users and for, you know, for the casual user and the serious user, and so we're gonna have a first-rate tennis facility, so thank you all for the cooperation and collaboration.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
This will be ordinance 01777. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes seven, zero. You guys are on your way. Next, we have a consideration to accept the proposal from RVS Banks for purchase card services for the City of Conway. Ms. Jamie?
Good evening. Very excited about procurement cards. Most cities our size and cities larger than us have taken this opportunity a long time ago, so I'm trying to catch this up a little bit. If you have any questions, though, I'll take them at this time. We have two representatives here from RVS. If you have questions for them, they'll be glad to answer them.
Can you?
I know we use procurement cards at UCA, and it makes just administering and getting things so much easier. Still associated with the purchase order, you still have those kind of checks and balances in place, but it just makes it a lot more efficient.
It does, it streamlines the process a lot, a great deal, and actually, UCA was a huge help to me, going from not knowing a lot about procurement cards to, she showed me everything that you all did, and it was a big help.
Just had to be careful not to accidentally use it.
I will say there will be intense training for all employees that have a purchasing card, yes.
What's the determination on who gets one?
I'm sorry?
What's the determination on who gets a card?
The department heads will decide who gets a card in their department.
Felicia told me I couldn't have one, Mr. Hawkins.
I make a motion to accept this proposal.
Second.
Okay, we have, yes, sir. Just a minute.
Can somebody explain exactly what this is? Because the ordinance, when I read, didn't say what this is.
Yes, I'm sorry. This is basically, you might do better at this than I will, but a debit card? Credit card? Credit card, let me say credit card. Just a means of purchasing. It tracks our purchases better than the system we have now, because it goes down to the individual employee, when they did it, where it happened, and what time.
This is the thing we've been talking about for fifteen years now?
We're working on it.
They just made it.
And you can set dollar limits and charge limits and, there's a lot of control you can put in place ahead of it.
I'm never gonna shy away from the chance to talk. And if I get to be on TV, I'm gonna text my wife and say, hey, pull this up. My name's Keith Zolikoff, and I'm the area account manager for our purchasing card program. One thing that will probably help you as well is with the procurement card program, you're able to add restrictions to cards based upon the city or the department's needs. So, it really isolates spend by department, by the need of the card. And so, that's one of the things that municipalities really embrace, is the control piece of the purchasing card program. So, I just wanted to add that, because I'm sure that was something.
We have most of the segments, any further discussion?
Phil, this may be a question, this may be a question for Mike or Jamie. Each month, will we pay the balances off in full? Or we'll be carrying credit?
True. True, and we'll make a little money, we'll receive a rebate.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter an approving agreement with RVS Bank for the P-card services for the city. No further discussion. Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm unupstained due to serving on RVS Board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Isby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Last item on the agenda, we have a discussion of the towing service rotation for the City of Conway. Mr. Hilton?
Has everybody got their packets? Okay. All right, as y'all know, I'm Bill Hilton, Hilton Record Service, Conway. Been recording for the City of Conway for about 45 years, and never run into anything like this before. But as you know, at the end of each year, we have to turn in a packet to the police department if you want to tow for the City of Conway, which is a new ruling that we set a few years ago. So, what happened was, is we get a letter from the PD, and it says pursuant to the order that this council right here set for the record service. And it starts in October and ends 30th of November. And at the end of 30th of November, if you didn't turn in your correct paperwork and stuff, I mean, you're done. But we had, and the reason why I brought this on, we had a couple of companies jump in at 11th hour trying to start two other companies in the same company and turned in their paperwork. Well, I decided, well, I'm gonna FOI their records and see if everything is correct. Well, come to find out, their insurance didn't qualify through what the city calls for, what they said we set right here and made in the ordinance. So, I visited with several people trying to find out why. I've been doing this for about seven months now, tried to get to the bottom of this, and why, why were they approved and put on towing for the city when they didn't qualify? And everybody I run into said, oh, it was okay, we give them a chance to make it up. Well, the ordinance doesn't read that, that you get a chance to make it up. And if you'll turn over to the first page there for Steve's towing in there, you will go down and see, this is what they turned in, it's a PD. On his large records, he's showing 150,000. Well, I think the city ordinance reads 200,000 on hook. They want cargo. And he started another company under Central Arkansas Auto and Towing. You know, his insurance was 150,000. It didn't qualify. Now, they turned these in, he turned his in on 11:29. Pro Auto, which is theirs, they turned theirs in on 11:30 of that morning, before the, you know, time ran out.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Who checks these to make sure the insurance and all that's correct, per our ordinance?
Major Hearn at the police department. He is the chief designated for the tow rotation.
And we don't know if he checked the limits or what's in the ordinance?
I know that he did.
He did?
I'm gonna let Mr. Hilton talk, and then I can respond.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I was gonna bring that up to you, Mary. Major Hearn is the one that he started out, you know, checking each one of us out with the papers and everything. And I never gave a second thought on the insurance about it being incorrect or anything, I never, you know, really went back and checked on it. But Major Hearn, I went and talked to him, and he said that he turned it over to the city attorney. I said, why did you do that? I mean, you know, he's the one who made the decision, checking, well, to do something was wrong when he did that. So, I went and talked to Mr. Clausen, visited with him. Sam Mitchell and myself, we're the two that, you know, started with Jim Smith's record, because he bought it out. And he told us that he okayed it. I had to stay on him several times, asking him about it. I said, why did you okay it? He said, well, he just okayed it, and everything's all right, you give them a chance to make it up. And I said, you can't do it, you can't make it up. And he said, well, he did, the ordinance was immaterial with him, and he didn't care whether they had insurance or not. And I said, excuse me? It's a law. You know, I said, now then, you mean, we could go out here and tow down the City of Conway, can't do a thing about what we want to charge? It's just in this city ordinance. Oh, he wouldn't answer it. So, you know, that's how we got to where we're at now. And then, we've had a visit with the mayor, Mr. Clausen, Major Hearn, and the chief in the mayor's office on this whole subject. And I asked them then about changing. They said it stands. I said, okay, there's more people that can hear this that would like to hear it. And I've talked to some of you on the phone about this, and getting it here, and it's been a bit of a challenge to get here, to get this before y'all. And if you'll turn on over to the next part, it's showing pro auto and area insurance. Shows he has only 50,000 on hook for his large records. And if you go over where he started the second company, Professional Recovery Operations, which is pro auto, same thing, it's only 100,000. I think it, you know, it doesn't say 200,000. And this is what they were turned in on 11:30. They jumped the gun on it, getting it turned in. So, I proceeded to go back and thought, well, this would be a good idea to recheck some of this in the past years, and went back two years. You know, I was told insurance made a mistake. And I was told, well, they just turned in the wrong paperwork. That's their problem. You should have checked it like I did mine before you turned it in, make sure everything's right. Oh, T's crashed, I dodged, you know? But, so going back, and I FOI'd from Major Hearn, he had the records of the years before. And I've got them here, if y'all would like to pass them out, copy of them, T's one of them.
You're talking about this here? I think if it's what you're talking about, rec-rotation dispute synopsis.
Yeah, that's fine, and maybe you say, then turn that over.
I don't know if it is.
It's a little different, yeah. Okay, those past years, I went back. In 2016, I believe it is here, let me get, yeah, pro auto. Well, see, he's got 200,000 on it, he qualified. Then come back, the year before that, he had, 2015, he only had 50,000, he didn't qualify. Nobody checked it. And same way this, of course, it goes, they'll show this year, he's only got 50,000. Same way with Steve. In 2014, he qualified. From that point on, from '16, '17, and '15, he didn't qualify for the insurance. And now, I never thought, I thought, well, I'll look these back up and just see, you know, what's going on here? Now, I don't know where it lies about who's to check these, is supposed to check them. And I felt that when Major Hearn turned it over to our city attorney to check them, to make sure it was correct, that he would check it. I figured that's his job, to make sure that, you know, everything is right. So, it wasn't. So, we're at this point that I feel that these four companies now need to be taken off immediately from the city rotation, because none of their records qualified. And there's other things in there that, you know, don't need me to bring them up, didn't qualify for them either, such as some of their equipment wasn't correct either. And there's other things in there that, you know, don't need me to bring them up, didn't qualify for them either, such as some of their equipment, wasn't correct either.
Any further questions, Mr. Hilton?
Yeah.
Not right now. Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
Okay.
Chief Spradlin, I'm gonna turn this over to you and city attorney at this time.
I'll start. We took a look at it, and I'm sorry that Mr. Hilton misremembers the conversation that we had. However, the, all the companies that are in the tow rotation were checked for compliance. They're sufficiently compliant with the condition of the ordinance, and the rotation, as far as I know right now, is working smoothly with the companies that are involved. We didn't see any need to remove anyone.
Yeah, and I will add to that, Mr. Hilton is the one that brought this oversight up to us, and yeah, it's Major Hearn's job. I'll go back about three years ago, when A.J. Gary was chief. He assigned Major Hearn to support division, division service, division of our department. That department actually handles the wrecker rotation for our department. During that, one of his marching orders that he gave Major Hearn, was to work with the wrecker companies. Said they hadn't had this in the past, listen to them, communicate with them, and work with them. So, that's what he did. And we built a lot of partnerships in our agency, in our community, and it's not always been done by a ruling with an iron fist. So, Mr. Hilton brought these insurance discrepancies to our attention, and they were corrected within twenty minutes with a phone call to the wrecker companies. Could we have kicked them off? Absolutely, we could have. I can go back to December of last year, DNS Wrecker Service, we had a few issues come up with them in the previous year. I wrote them a letter, listed those, listed those problems that we'd had in their service, and told them if they didn't raise their standards to the service that we require, then they will be kicked off. Could I have kicked them off? Absolutely. Did I do it? No. We have a long time history of working with people, and that's what we did. We're trying to work with the wrecker companies. Technically, by the letter of it, yeah, we missed it. And there, there's really no excuse for that. We just missed that the paperwork that they turned in did not show two hundred thousand as opposed to a hundred fifty thousand. We missed that. But does that mean we need to go, after we've already told these companies, you're on the two thousand seventeen wrecker service, you're now kicked off? Because as of November the thirtieth, you didn't have it. No, we didn't do that, we just tried to work with them, so.
And, Chief, just for clarification for the, for the council as well, it was my understanding too, that it was an insurance company mistake, and not a company, not a wrecker service, of the two or four companies that Mr. Hilton's referring to. That's the reason it was corrected so quickly, is because they sent a new declaration page showing the actual limits that complied with the ordinance.
We didn't receive any.
It was more of an insurance company oversight versus the wrecker companies being referred to.
So, everybody's kosher right now, and has the correct amount of coverage?
Everybody is.
And everybody did at the time, it's just the, the insurance declarations page, I guess, that was turned in, had the lower limits, but was corrected once it was, once they were, the insurance companies were contacted.
I mean, could, could we, could we, for this year, send the ordinance to all the wrecker services and put, you've got to comply with what the ordinance states? You know, and if, if you don't, then you will be kicked off the rotation. I mean, it, it needs to be fair across the board, I feel like, for everybody. And there wouldn't be any excuse, say, oh, I didn't know, I didn't realize it, or whatever, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page, with what all is, is expected of them, it might help, just so this doesn't happen again, or whatever, you know?
Chief, were there bid specifications on this, were they, were they put out, or council, either one, you wanted to talk, that'd be fine?
This, this isn't a bid situation.
Okay.
This is a little bit different situation than us putting out bids, the contract with a, with an entity, a company, or anything like that. This is a situation, it's a little bit reversed from most, you know, basically, we're, we're the customer, in essence, and these wrecker services provide a service. We dictate that service through the ordinance. Part of the, being able to get on the rotation, you have to meet the certain conditions. And again, I just want to reiterate that all of the wrecker companies that are on the rotation currently, are compliant with the, with the ordinance.
They are currently, the ordinance, does it list the requirements?
It does.
It does? And does it say two hundred thousand dollars?
It does.
And when those bids were turned, now, found a bid, because it wasn't a bid situation.
The qualifications.
Or when their qualifications, when they were turned in, they didn't show that, that amount on there, is that correct?
That's my understanding, and again, I go back to the insurance company, didn't reflect that properly.
And I've called, I've called the insurance agency in question, to try and get copies, and identified myself as a city alderman of this community, and tried to get copies of the certificates of insurance for November thirtieth, and then for December first. And I was pretty much met with a stone wall. So, that told me that maybe they didn't have proper coverage enforced, and those coverages were changed at some time in the future. I don't know that, but because they did not respond to me, I'm gonna make that assumption. What we have here, what we have here, guys, is, 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 I got you. I got you, because we've got two wrecker services, here's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with three people who were getting thirty-three percent of a pie, and two of them got greedy and said, let's go get forty percent, if you'll form, if you'll form a company, you go get twenty more, and I'll get twenty, and we'll get forty percent instead of thirty-three percent, and we're gonna mess old Bill Hilton up. That's what we're looking at right here, that's all we're looking at.
I think that's a bit dramatic. I think that, I think that what this is, is the, the sister companies that were created by the, the, two of the companies that were on the rotation in twenty sixteen, they did see an opportunity within the ordinance to create a sister company, and those companies complied with the ordinance, we can't kick them off. This is, for Mr. Hilton, it's my belief, this is a competition issue and not a compliance issue. And so, he's wanting you to remove his competition, and that's what it basically comes down to. We've dealt with these issues, with him on email, meetings, phone calls, it needs to end. There's not really anything that I believe that this council can do. The ordinance is enforced by the PD, they think that they're in compliance, the, the rotation is working properly, here we are, I'm sorry.
I have a suggestion, something I could do. This, this has been the craziest thing since my fifteen years on the council, this wrecker. These guys go at it, and that tells me they're making a lot of money. Otherwise, they wouldn't be here every other week, bribing each other. If we ever looked to do it as a city, and make that money ourselves, that would eliminate all this problem.
We have looked.
We're actually doing that.
We've looked at several.
If it's gonna be a problem, we can solve that problem in several different ways.
And we used to charge them five thousand, we took that away.
Yeah, we did.
Now, we'll, we'll actually have, we'll actually have some numbers to present in the future.
In the very near future, we're gonna look at changing the, what we did in going to the ordinance, is really taking it off the council, to, so you wouldn't have to deal with these issues.
Exactly.
This, this infighting that we've had to deal with in the past that I've heard about.
Hey, I enjoyed it while it was good, until we got, until we got somebody that got smart to do this.
And, so, what I would think is, notice is gonna be provided to the current rotation members, that there will be changes forthcoming. The new rotation will be significantly different, and handled and administered differently than it has been in the past. And whatever the, this council decides to do, and what that looks like, we can talk about in the future. But I don't foresee this being an issue brought to you, again, after that.
I, I just want to make sure everybody follows the same set of rules, whatever that is.
I agree with you.
If they don't have it on that date, they're out. I mean, you know, I, you know, mistake or no mistake, it's, you should have caught it.
I think what it was, was that they actually had the insurance, they actually had the amount, but the insurance company.
I'm talking about for this, for this next year, in, in November, or whenever it's due, that if they don't have it at that point, then it's just, you know, make sure you get it in plenty of time, check your paperwork to make sure it's correct.
We may have, you may have a tow truck by then.
Hey, listen, I can with the best of.
Well, and did we ever have anything that said it was exclusive to only three companies? I don't.
No.
Those are the ones that apply?
No, we said general conditions, and basically, if they complied with the conditions, and they could be, get in the rotation, that will change.
Any further discussion?
You know, I'm not gonna sit here and believe what I'm hearing about them telling that this is okay. You know, it's the city ordinance, and my understanding is that not a law? When y'all passed it here, is that not a law, for it to be right? And you're gonna let the city attorney tell you, oh, it's okay, they made it up, and they did it right? It's not because I'm getting greedy about it, it's because these guys got greedy in terms of, like I said, jumping here, and want to take over the whole, whole city. Now, I've been towing for this city, like I said, for over forty-five years, you know, and this is.
Form you another company?
Yeah, this is the hardest thing I've ever heard in my life, you know, come in here, and then the city attorneys say it's okay. But if you go back and read your ordinance, when it says the end of November thirtieth, you're done. And I waited till after the time, when I FOied all these records.
Let me ask you something, what would, what would your solution be for this?
Pardon me?
Kick everybody off with you?
No.
What's your solution?
The only two that qualified was Smith Wrecker Service and Hilton's.
Everybody else should go with your.
Those other four, now, here's the deal, which I tried to make a deal with the city attorney on it, Sam Mitchell and myself, and I said, okay, take two of them off, that they just put on, and we'll let go of that and move on. He wouldn't do it.
But there's nothing the ordinance say they can't do that?
It what?
There's nothing in the ordinance to prevent them from forming another company, if they choose to do that?
Well, no, there's not. No way, I mean, they could, if they, you know, want to form a company, that's fine. It, like Pro Auto, he started the other company, the only problem was, he was separate from his building and everything, and he had separate trucks. But his insurance didn't qualify. So, we got to check, and he didn't want his insurance, on his business itself, and on the new company that he got too, didn't qualify, you know?
So, with the application deadline, they didn't qualify?
That's right. It was the insurance. Because I waited after that, and FOied them, I believe it was in, right after, I think I waited to about the first year when I got it, because of holidays and everything that was coming in through there. But, you know, and, and I can't believe it, you know, that you could say, well, it's okay. You know, so, it's the way it's gonna run, and it's gonna get out, that Conway City Council is gonna say, with the wrecker service, come in, and if they want to do what they want to over here, do it, because you don't do anything about it.
Well, it's not our job to enforce ordinances, we pass them, we don't enforce them. So, I don't, what we can do.
Well, I mean, you passed it right.
Yes, but we do not enforce them, so what are you wanting us to do?
And the ordinance.
We don't enforce them.
Oversight failed the PD.
And the ordinance specifically states that the violations will be determined by the police department, and that designee will also determine the consequence, consequences of the violations. So, what we've done, and I think the city attorney referenced that, is we have made the police department our designee to enforce this. That's kind of following the ordinance.
Y'all won't let that apply.
If they don't enforce it properly, there's other remedies for that, but we are not the remedy, we do not enforce ordinances. We pass them. So, I mean, I don't, there's other ways, if you need relief, there's other ways to get relief, but it's not with this body.
Well, and I think, Mr. Hilton, at this point, for us to make a decision, or even to recommend that we kick everybody off, at today, or as of today, they've got the proper coverage, so, you know.
It's too late, though, she.
Well, that may be too late, but we're, we can't make, I can't make a decision today based on something that they have that's current.
Yeah. Well, it wasn't current when it was put down, and it's always been before, when we've had to go before the city council with stuff, and the council made the decisions on it, police department didn't make them.
I think they did this three years ago, to keep from having this.
Come up to us. To keep from having it at our doorsteps every.
I mean, we had everything a lot about.
Can I finish talking, please? I never interrupt anybody, it's, can I finish? We, they did that because we were coming in here for meetings, and all the wrecker services were in here arguing and bickering, and we were in here till ten, eleven o'clock at night, because y'all were bickering. So, they took it off of us, and let the police department and the city attorney handle it, so we went out to have these discussions. We can, we can vote on the ordinance, but we can't go out and, we can't go out and do that, just like I can't go out and drive your wrecker. We, we don't have the power to do that. It's, it's not, they did that to keep from having these kind of arguments.
Are bringing it to us every time something happens?
Well, see, we tried to organize, I did, we tried to organize, get together, quit, you know, keep doing that. And then, some of them started, and it wasn't me, it started, another company started this stuff about the five thousand that we were paying each year, for the, you know, be on the wrecker service. And that's what started the whole thing, everything was working fine, you know. And if anybody wanted to come in, that's what they had to do, so they set it up this way. So, you know, I just felt that city council might set the ordinance, set the ordinance, and then, and, you know, you're to see that it's carried out, and it be right.
I sympathize with you, and I, I hear what you're saying, but by the same token, you're talking about we should do right, and we should follow the ordinance. You just told me you tried to make a deal with him to take some off and leave some on, so which way do you want it?
Yeah, well, at this point, once he wouldn't set, set the deal, I just said, take all off.
So, it's a deal or make a deal?
There you go.
It's not my job to negotiate or make deals, so.
I don't see that as ours either.
Make sure they're following.
We need any action on anything with this, just discussion.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
All right.
Come, come up to the mic.
That's frustrating to me, but you did say that he was trying to make a deal. He was willing to let things go back to the way it worked before.
Could, could you come up to the mic, please, and state your name?
For you, for you to say that he was not, that he's like willing to.
Could you state your name, please, for the record?
Pamela Lewis.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm with Mr. Hilton. But for you to say that he was willing to make a deal or not make a deal.
He said that.
Okay, I understand, but that's, that's what y'all, y'all just implied, that it was like all or nothing.
No, I said, which way do you want it?
Can, can I speak now?
Sure, finish.
Thank you.
And I, I'll reply when you get finished.
Okay, thank you. All four of these wrecker services did not have their proper paperwork. Every year, we have to submit our paperwork by November thirtieth, that's a deadline. There's all kinds of things in this ordinance, that you have to submit, and have prepared. They didn't have the proper paperwork. It didn't matter, no matter what, I mean, if you don't have your board certification, your permits, whatever it is. If you don't have that, you shouldn't be considered. It does not matter, they did not have the proper paperwork. But he was saying to Judge, or Attorney Clausen, he was willing to let it go with, with Pro Auto and Steve's. You know, they've been on there forever, let bygones be bygones with them, even though their insurance did not qualify. That's what he was trying to say then. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be upset or emotional, but that just frustrates me, y'all, y'all are trying to imply that this man is greedy. He's not the greedy person here. You know, he is not, he's the one that has done everything by the book, and gets kicked in the teeth every time he turns around, by playing by the rules. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Can I, can I? I never said that, I said, he wanted it enforced, did he want everybody off? He said he tried to work out a deal with him. He said, we need to follow the rules, if that's the, if that's the case.
If he want.
Can I, okay, if that's the case, then don't make a deal, say you want everybody off, not because somebody's been there for a while. If that's what he wanted, and not make a deal, say, well, I want him off, but I'm gonna keep him because he's been here a while, that's, that's not the way to do it.
It's the same companies.
This what?
It's the same companies.
No, that's not what we, you're not.
Pro Auto and Pro, P R O, are the same companies as Steve's and Central Arkansas Towing. He was giving them the benefit of the doubt.
He's gonna take two off and leave two on.
Okay.
Okay, and according to him, everybody other than him didn't comply, so why would he make that deal?
Not everybody other than him didn't comply. Seal with DNS Auto complied, Jim Smith's complied. DNS Auto has since completely dropped out, simply because of all the hoops and regulations, that he can't meet with all of this. You know, he bent over backwards and went through everything that y'all had to, y'all put him through to get on this. And then this came up with these two companies. And then this came up with these two companies being able to throw their hat in at the end of the ring, you know, like they said, the 11th hour. And, you know, it put him out of business. You know, he's not willing to fight anymore. You know, he went out and bought a heavy. He had to go through all these different things to satisfy y'all and still, you know, have companies come in and do this that don't have the documentation that they need to be on the service and still be able to undercut y'all. Y'all think that it's us being greedy. Everything was, you know, everybody had like an even share. What it did when it added them to the rotation, they had like five and six calls this year where we had one call for the whole year. That's the difference we're talking about.
Okay, that's the last thing I'm gonna say. We wasn't the one that required him to get that heavy equipment, if I remember correctly. It was other wrecker services saying he wasn't meeting the standards. It wasn't the city council. It wasn't us saying that he needed to get a heavy equipment. It was the wrecker services.
It's the ordinance guidelines, just like the insurance is the ordinance guidelines.
It was not us complaining about the size of the wrecker. And I remember that distinctly.
Well, the city ordinance requires it because the city needs that type of equipment to do the job in this area, just like you need the insurance to cover the equipment in this area. You know, to operate the equipment that you have.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's the point that you brought up with DNS. When he was here, wanted to get on, come there to the council, and he didn't have his heavy. Then he got his heavy, then y'all said, "Okay, it's good to go." So now you tell them the police department made the decision?
We didn't, we, we had no idea what to go with. We don't know nothing about the size of the wrecker. Y'all were the ones that wanted that.
But, I mean, it was right here. He came right here at the meeting when we all met on it.
Okay, guys, I appreciate everybody talking and all the discussion we've had tonight. I'm gonna cut it off at this point. There's no decisions can be made tonight, Mr. Hilton. If I'm, is that correct?
That is true.
No decisions can be made, no decision can be made tonight. Also, the other companies that have been mentioned tonight have not been, they were not here to defend themselves. So, uh.
Yeah, that's their problem.
Well, no, it's not their problem. If they're gonna be accused of something, they have the right to defend themselves, just like you do. So, we're through with this tonight. We're through with this tonight. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
We adjourned.
Hey, Mr. Gary, sir. Is there any way you could, minutes, because if I remember correctly, he was complaining about the size of the wrecker. He was the one complaining that that guy didn't have a big enough wrecker. I remember.